With him, Jerry James, Jeffrey Boyer.
Let's record attendance.
I don't think any of them would be giving a reason.
Jeffrey Gilling?
President.
Kyle Dandler?
Here.
Michael Hagan?
Here.
The Pauline?
Here.
William Iset?
Here.
Steven Hall? Absent. Mary Jo Reiner?
Here.
Priya Serene?
Here.
Chris Fitts?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any visitor comments?
No visitor comments.
Ms. Moyer?
Hello, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner. Um, we had an executive discussion tonight.
Turn on your mic.
I'm not a practice, right? I've been here since the beginning of December. Um, sorry, excuse me. We had an executive session tonight where we discussed, um, some legal issues and some personnel-related matters.
I need a motion to approve the minutes. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All of the minutes are approved under Section 3. Dr. Mann?
Yes, very briefly, Mrs. Reinhardt's regarding facilities with thanks to our Facility Committee and Mr. Pepe. Upcoming, before our next February meeting, we anticipate going out to bid for the JPLIS exterior wall project. And we also intend to go out to bid for the ventilation project here at the high school. We'll seek retroactive approval for authorization to go out to bid in our February meeting. And of course, obviously, no action or approvals will take place until the bids come back, at which time they'll be reviewed by the board and hopefully awarded to contractors to get moving on our work.
I have a question.
Yes.
We were, um, was there a, I heard that there was a rough estimate for the IS bricks discussed. Did we, but I didn't know what that was, and I was curious what, what we, I know we have to put it out to bid, but I heard that we did get a rough estimate on what it would cost.
Yeah, and all I can tell you is that it came in very favorably, which should allow us to go out to bid without a problem. We certainly don't want to share that budget estimate at this time, since we are going to go out to accept bids on the project.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions, I'm sorry also, about the construction. So are we still on track then to complete the stadium project specifically before the next school year? Or in August, I think we were talking about, right?
We believe we are still, obviously, we had a late start.
Right.
So we are less confident than had we started a month earlier.
Right.
But we are hopeful and believe that it's reasonable to expect that we could be finished still on time for the start of this fall season. We have also asked our high school principal and athletic director to make provisions if, in fact, it runs a little longer than it should.
So then I'm assuming then we have a plan for the spring sports that are upcoming that typically would be in the stadium, only because I'm hearing some questions from community members, because I know winter track and field, for example, they've been utilizing busing to local universities. But I wasn't sure how well that was going to work in the spring if those same universities are also in season. So I'm just curious how, you know, assuming we have a plan, I'm just curious.
Mr. Zimmerman consulted with all affected coaches. They met together and developed a plan that I believe is to everyone's satisfaction, and they're moving forward with implementation. If you had maybe some specific questions about any particular sport, I would have to refer them to our athletic director.
Well, I'm just wondering, maybe before registration, I don't have any specific questions beyond what I asked, but it might be helpful, maybe just because we have been dinged in the past by community members with respect to communication, because I just know from experience now as a high school parent, you know, you get the registration email, and you don't always have a lot of information about what the practices are going to look like. And I know there might be some differences from what we've done in the past, meaning, you know, in the most part, we do practices right after school onsite. So I think parents probably could use that information as well as students to make a decision as to whether or not they can participate.
I will, I will pass that thought on to our athletic director. I think probably the best source of that information is actually the coaches of the individual teams to be out communicating to their parents. So I'll pass that on, very good suggestion to our athletic director.
So I don't know, maybe there could be links, since the coaches have the information and we don't have contact with coaches before kids sign up, maybe, you know, there could be some type of like links set up, like I'm picturing like a document hyperlink, because we've been really good about that, I feel like lately, in particular with things with the high school and dual enrollment, for example. But maybe when you send out those emails to parents to tell them that registration is open, you know, just a suggestion to help parents make decisions.
This is Emily, actually, that brings to mind while you were talking, Dr. Serene. I do have a specific on that. I know other sports, traditionally winner sports, for instance, have busing to their facility, for instance. But then, um, parents and guardians pick up their athletes, their student athletes, maybe from that distant facility. And perhaps, in this case, folks who, for whatever reason, just through word of mouth or because they've had older kids do it in the past, might be anticipating that same family schedule. So that, for instance, I'm just going to use this because I'm a track parent. So for instance, track, you know, you, your child stays after school, has practice, and then you pick up from the school, and you can figure out how to manage that from a family transportation schedule. But other sports, like I know as a, as a senior experienced parent in the high school, that swimming doesn't do that, you have to travel outside of school district bounds to pick up. So perhaps the specific on that communication point, if it could be made to understand before signups, if you'll have to travel to a distant location to get your, just having that kind of a schedule and on what days that would occur and how would probably be helpful as a part of the construction update and the planning, if we have that in place. That would be my specific, it hadn't occurred to me until Dr. Serene brought it up. Thanks.
At our workshop meeting two weeks ago, Dr. Trinkle and staff presented a information about Witten Wisdom and curriculum for K through six. So we're here tonight, I need a motion to approve the Witten Wisdom as a K through six ELA core programming for Southern Lehigh.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries, noting Mr. Demick did not approve. We have a high school programs of studies. Did you get that, Dan? Did not approve. We have a motion to approve the attached 2023-24 High School Program of Studies and a external license agreement between Lehigh University Athletics and Southern Lehigh District for graduation. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
I had, I had a quick question, just as a follow-up to the question I asked last time, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to follow up or look to see if the document had been changed. My question was regarding, we had had previous board discussion, both before and other board meetings, about, uh, students who choose to pursue advanced coursework over the summer, also being able to have a study hall in their schedule to allow for like a work-life balance, as it were, or the opportunity to pursue other, has that change been made? Was it able to be made? And if not, why not? Or just some sort of update on that question?
I did discuss that with Mr. Miller, and it remained in the program of study with the understanding that it is more of a, a meeting that should take place to determine, is there a study hall necessary? It doesn't preclude somebody from not having a study hall in their schedule.
Okay, so the, I'm sorry, I just blanked out for a second there. So you said the handbook was changed to say that?
The language wasn't changed.
Okay.
But a discussion was, we had a discussion about why it was written the way it was. But it doesn't preclude the study hall. It's more of a, not a deterrent, but you know, we really want to make sure that a study hall is necessary.
Okay, sure.
Because from a master scheduling standpoint, it's really hard to look at course requests, know what kind of teachers we're going to need and all of those types of things.
Sure.
So it's a logistics and a discussion.
Okay, great. And I thought the language did preclude it, but if you're saying it doesn't, and that'll be a discussion point, that's, that's great.
It's more of a, of a bigger discussion about why and is it appropriate?
Okay, great, students, okay, thanks, thanks for that.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? That carries, uh, we have a waiver of expulsion, so we need a motion. So a second. Who's second? Dr. Wayack? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody approved? Opposed? Okay, the expulsion carries. I'm going to call on Mr. Pepe to present.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. See if I can get this a little closer. Okay. So, a couple of things we have tonight. First of all, bills list, we have two months of the bills list. We are currently up to date. I'll start with the December bills list. Pretty much, uh, common characters on the bills list. You might have noticed HSA Mechanical Services for $51,173. That's to keep our boilers operational. And we did have some welding issues at the middle school, I believe, that was taken care of. And Michael has done a phenomenal job, Michael Rohrbach and his team, at keeping us operational. Outside of that, the bills list for that month is really nothing big deal. It's pretty much on par. The January bills list is a little up, and predominantly from Carbon Lehigh IU21, there's a very large bill, and it's a composite bill from many of the various services and a lot of the special education programs that are over there, but that's $558,930. ELD Consulting is another one that you may have looked at and said, what is that for? That has to do with the consortium, the Health Benefits Consortium we're in. ELD Consulting represents us as well as the other various districts. They're part of the consortium, and we pay direct to the consulting firm to help negotiate on our behalf, better rates with Highmark. Hazleton Area School District, that's a placement, $18,000. Indian Valley Appraisal Company, $19,712. That has to do with the appraisals that we had ordered as, through our attorney, Sweet Stevens, when we were looking at a couple of the rather large, um, appeals that were being finalized. And one of them has actually been adjudicated. One of the other ones is a result of a agreement that we came to that will be on the bills list, or not on the bills list, but that'll come up in the property tax refunds. I'll cover that in a moment. Outside of those, that's pretty much it.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Pepe, this is Emily. Were you saying, um, all of those Sweet Stevens bills were related to property that'll come up later? Or is it a mix of property and other?
No. The appraisals are all related to the cases that we had Sweet Stevens looking into.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
And most of it has to do with hotels and Salkin Valley Lifestyle Center.
Thanks.
Salkin Valley Lifestyle Center, you'll see on there is $114,000. That's one of the settlements. And outside of that, I'm going to move on unless there's any other questions on bills list. Treasures report, again, great news. We're sitting here looking at November and December, $63,000 coming in in interest for the month of November, $72,000 coming in for December. And again, as planned, we're well on track to receiving a good amount of money this year. We're at $313,000 year-to-date on interest, which is far ahead of what we had budgeted. And that will also help us as we're moving forward and preparing our budget for the balance of the next couple of months. Property tax refunds, we have, December 5th is $4,918, representing a couple of properties. The January change notice that came out represents $142,000, but however, one of them is $97,000 on its own, and that has to do with the settlement. So we're in pretty good shape there. Just because it's apropos, I set up the February exception billing today for the last four months, and we're again, running well ahead in about $350,000 that I billed out today. And most of that has to do with new homes and/or changes like someone put a pool in or added a garage. So that revenue side is looking pretty good. Any questions about those topics?
Keep going, I'm going to take all the motions together.
Okay. The annual support for the Southern Public Library is on there again, as discussed, same amount. And then I'm going to go ahead and start talking about the audit if I can. Okay, so, first of all, I'm not going to speak too much about the audit because we have our auditor here tonight, Mr. Mark Anderson. And I would like to just point out a couple of quick things. You know, it's very apropos, the School Business Affairs Magazine that came out for this month has the, has the topic about forecasting and planning. And that's one of the things that we've been talking about, you know, since we got here on the administrative front. And the first couple of topics is going beyond budgets for student success. And that's one of the things that drives us, because we're in the business of education. And debt financing and funding alternatives. And that's something that we had just gone through on the Facilities Committee and talking about not just going out to the market to always bond for everything, but looking at what's in the best interest of the district and looking at cash flow. So I'm very happy to say that that all ties into our actual audit this year. The financial highlights are covered in the Management Discussion and Analysis section. I'm very happy to say that there was a lot of positive things that are in there. I would, you know, definitely say it's worth a good read. Also, some of the highlights, I'm going to, you know, try and allow the auditor to talk about, but what's most important on our end is fund balance. And that is our assigned fund balance of $12,000, or $12,400,000, and our unassigned fund balance of $4,200,000. And I think what's really important is, as the superintendent had talked about last month or early in the month, we closed out positive. And we're here by design, not by accident. We had projected and planned to be where we are. And, you know, one of the first things, if you remember, I said last year, is we need to get our spending in line with our revenue. You cannot spend more than you're taking in in revenue. And we were able to, in one year, get our spending down and generate more in our revenue, which allowed us to finish the year out positive $2,234,984. The other thing is to look at where our reserves are and make sure that we're properly set to do the business we need to do as a board and as a district. And when you started the meeting off, Dr. Serene, and you were talking about the facilities and construction projects, that's where we need to have reserve. So I've looked at that, and we have collectively, you know, the superintendent and I, looked at realigning our reserves to ensure that we have money in capital reserve, which we now have 7.9 million in a capital reserve, and making sure that we have the other reserves adequately where they need to be, whether those reserves are for Peasars increases in the retirement, other post-employment benefits, which we are required to have on hand, the 2.4 million, and health insurance increases, we brought down to 700,000 because we budget for health insurance increases every single year as part of the actual audit. So with no further ado, I'm going to ask our auditor, Mark Anderson, to come up, and he's going to go over some of the finer points of the audit. And then we can certainly answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Mark.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wasn't going to go into the whole lot of the detail on the numbers, because the major highlights, he just went over. The core of the audit, there's three basic opinions. One opinion on the financial statements that exist, one on the internal control of the district, and then one on compliance in regards to the federal monies you got. In regards to all those opinions, they're unmodified. What does that mean? There was no problems. Similar to last year, my conversation here is pretty short and sweet. You don't want an auditor up here expounding that there was issues in this area and that area, and that they weren't resolved. I encountered no significant obstacles or issues with anything. Accounts are being reconciled on a monthly basis. The controls that are in place are being performed by management and staff. And fortunately, I have nothing really to say in regards to the financial statements in an adverse manner. Everything's unmodified as it should be. The district's been operating this way in a period of years. And through change of transition of administration, sometimes things can get flipped up once in a while. It hasn't happened. So I have nothing but good things to say in regards to the overall look at the financial statements. If you have any questions in regards to some of the numbers and details, I'd be happy to address them. But again, Lou, hit the fine, finer points and larger points of where you're at.
Thank you, Lou. Does anybody have questions or comments?
I just have a comment, and I want to thank you very much, Lou. I think I read in there that for two years in a row now, so your two years of tenure, we are, we're net positive. Previous six years was, was negative, so I want to thank you for that. I think that's very important for our district and for our future.
And then if there's no other questions, I would like to thank my staff and the district in total, you know, each of the offices, each of the schools, everything from student activities to, you know, making sure that every day when we're processing purchase orders, that people are account coding properly and making sure that, you know, we are doing what we need to do the right way. My staff accountant, Shannon Williams, deserves a lot of credit. She does a lot of work, and it really comes through when it's time to audit. And we're able to pull up what the auditor requests for, and we had no snags with any of that. So thank you to the entire team.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lou, do you want to continue with the budget update?
I'm going to try and get this computer screen up there, and we should be good to go. Yeah, I think it's going to work. I think. Yep, that's me.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Okay, so now the hard part's over. This is the easy part. Okay, so, if you remember last year, a lot of this is the same at this point. And that is, we start with, every year we have options of what we can do. And this is every single school district in the state, that's the thing. So the first option is pass a resolution to stay at or below the Act One index. So the Act One index this year, it's 4.1%. Of course, our superintendent told me that's not going to happen. So we are not going to exceed the index. We are not raising taxes 4.1%. So as a result, that resolution was adopted by the board on the November meeting. And what's really important is just because the language states at or below, we're not going to come anywhere as close to this. Our goal is to try and bring a reasonable budget forward at the lowest possible impact that we can put together. So the thing that really comes down to this, and this is just general information for the public, the board's pretty much on this, we're passing a resolution that we will not exceed the index. Where it is also stating that we won't have enough in our obligations to meet our needs for the year, and that any increase will be equal to or below the index. That's it. So that decision's really going to get pushed off until April, and then we'll finalize where we are in June with improvement of the budget. So one of the things that's new this year is budget calendar. And the budget calendar is very helpful, and the public can follow along as well. I posted it on the budget tab for the business office on our district website. And what this does, it breaks down current events, what's upcoming, like today, you'll see on the January 23th presentation. It tells you responsibilities, who's doing what. So as you can tell from this, the budget process has already started. It's already started at the building level. We've already had meetings with building principals. We have to justify their line item requests. That's done very, very well. And I can tell you, the principals are very easy to work with, and they're coming at this from the same perspective that we are. What's in the best interest of the district or education, member of destruction, and how can we really be fiscally responsible then? So moving forward, some of the challenges, every year there's challenges. This particular budget run, one of the biggest challenges out there is utility prices. Here, and utility conditions, there's increases in electric. They know what they're talking about, because our energy consultant, Provident, has already been looking at our accounts. And again, we're one of many, we're one of 58, 57 other districts that are in an energy consortium. So currently, if you look up here, you see that we're coming off historic lows. We're in a, we're in a dividend that's ending June of 2023. And we're currently enjoying about 6.2 cents per kilowatt hour. This is just on the supply. So there's about another 2 cents if we padded to that. When you look at the utility market, that's at 12 cents. When you look at where we think we're going in a multi-year pricing, it's closer to 10 and a half cents per kilowatt hour on the supply. So if you look at that, that's a 69% increase right there. So what is that actually going to mean? In terms of dollars, when I look at the actual utilization, we're currently consuming about 5,164,000 kilowatt hours for the year, which is costing us approximately $425,000. What that means is that we do not change our consumption at all and use the same amount of kilowatt hours, we're going to be moving to about $630,000, based on the new cost model. So that's an increase of about $185,000. So when we look holistically at the whole budget, we look for other areas of savings that can potentially offset that, so we can try and get closer to our zero goal of no increase. That's one of the things that's, you know, happening right now. So what we'll be doing, continuing to leverage our buying power with the other districts. We're already in the middle of another bid cycle that was generated about a week ago. On the 17th, based on the warmish winter, it's determined that maybe we should go out again and see if we can do a better job of getting the pricing. And when I say we go out, it's an insurrection, Provident. So they've released pricing packages, initial pricing, coming back on Valentine's Day, we'll maybe get a good response. We're looking to get final pricing and recommendations done with the, with the consultant and get contracts signed so that we can lock in some decent rates. Probably see how that's going. On the better news front, Peasars, our pension obligation, declined over a decade. And that's pretty significant. You know, being a conservative money guy, my concern is, maybe grid this year, what's it going to do to us in future years? I haven't seen. So what's that going to mean? So far, they haven't given us rates, like hopefully, you know, best-case scenario, if I saved $158,000 on Peasars, that would cover the increase of $158,000 on electric. So that's one of the, you know, better news fronts that's coming out. So tonight, as typical, the district approves the portion of the budgets that also impact our budget. And they are three of them. It's Lehigh, Farming County, LTRI-C, the Technical Institute, and the IU21. So tonight, we're going to vote on two of them, LTRI-C and the IU. So let's look at those, and LCTI, we should get numbers in for them for next one. So currently, we're looking at $285,000 that hits our budget. And this is one area, which is the combined school district sponsorship of 6.1%. Our share is 285. No, there's no change, there's no increase from prior year. Moving along to the IU, total generating, or total general operating budget of 3.4 mil. Combined district contribution amount is 819. But again, there is no increase on our budget this year. So let's dig a little deeper in, and we look at the LTRI-C. The overall expenditures are around $913,000. What I find interesting when I break it down is salary and benefits are actually doing pretty well. It's about 74% of your budget. Usually, it runs between 75, 80% of the budget. They also have a lot of part-time without benefits, which helps them. Their benefits are going up 11%, that's all districts in Lehigh Valley Consortium. So that will also be our increase. We start doing our benefit fees. What I found really interesting is that they're utilizing $920,000 of reserves that will offset their increase on the expenditures. So what it does is, I look at, that was up 107% from last year. It helps net their overall expenditure down to $137,000. So when I see something like that, my concern becomes, how much do they still have left in reserves? And are they decreasing their reserves? I looked into their audit from prior year, and I focused the spotlight here on the fact that they still have $27,500 in reserves. So they have a very healthy fund balance. One of the other things that's concerning too is if their budget starts to go south, then they would have to raise the tuition thing. And they're trying to hold the line to make sure that it's still affordable and go to college here. So take the things from that, we don't have any problem with approving their budget right. When I look at the overall, the sponsor appropriation, as I said, is no increase. It's 10.4 last year, 10.3 this year. When I look at Southernly High's portion of that, we're actually going down slightly. It's broken out by the operating budget, which is down $569. And that's also the distribution cost model, and also a number of students that impact that. And the capital budget lease is going down $833, or in total, going down $1400. So it's not going to have any impact on our budget this year. Do you have any questions about this? There's a lot of information.
I just had a quick question, Emily, and a quick question. Thanks for that breakdown. I believe that this budget, LTRI-C's budget, is different from, for instance, LCTI's budget in that, that teeny tiny spreadsheet numbers that are hard to read that you just put up and pull down. Those numbers for LCTI are based off of, in part, enrollment in Southernly High students in that. However, these numbers are based off of a set formula and not any type of enrollment numbers. Am I correct in my recollection of that? Thanks, that was my only, I just wanted to make sure.
Does this all come down to recovery value?
Yeah.
And also the changes with that?
Which is a formula, kind of, yeah, okay, thank you. And it is not going to fluctuate unless those assessments fluctuate, for instance. Okay, thank you.
So here with the IU, the expenditures are a total increase of $120,000. Public services, it's the same as the 21%. And this is a percent of their, see, salaries are a little bit called going up 3%, 5%, these are 28, 34% reflects the reductions, it's currently around 35 and change. So when I look at their actual breakdown that they sent us on the board review, actually, we're interested in that. So I highlighted a couple of quick things to talk about. That need to be talked about. Yeah. It's a whole part of issues with public services. Along with the requirement to provide additional development initiatives, these keeper services are steadily increasing. Now, the whole point of the idea is to help offset costs for districts that might find it to be more expensive to try and go out and procure these type of services on the road. While we value the partnership, we've done to develop opportunities to bring more services in district after reaching a full cost saving. And this is the important, more strategic area. Now, Dr. Trinkle has spent a lot of time looking at the educational program and uses that we've been, you know, getting through that, trying to see if we can enhance better savings and also better payoff of achieving, you know, better tests. Our GPMT is well. And as we need to start looking at that, like we wanted to be services that we were spending about $300,000 for, they're 30 foot up, 30 foot up. That's going to come back in district because no longer going to have to be obligated for that, they're going to be able to do that in-house. So when I see revenue going up on the IU, I see first lining increase in expense for us or any other district utilizing the services. So that's pretty much it. Do you have any other questions on that? Go ahead.
Still surprised by the piece here's rate, especially given what the market was last year. Explain why, I know that's not our decision, but what?
Yes, it really, it really came down to the, what do you call them? Number crunchers, looking at the.
It's an actuarial, and the actual, this, this number is a lagging indicator. So while we're kind of spiking the ball now, wait till next year, when the 40 or 30% losses in stocks will come to bear. So not only will we be going up, we'll be going up substantially to kind of backfill this hole. So you're 100% on, it's just that it's a lagging indicator, the number we have now.
And that kind of goes to my comments of, while it's great this year, what's it going to be in the future? And it's also predicated on how many retirees are no longer with us. And as a result of COVID and some of the changes in the, in the numbers and the demographics, they felt that they had more than they needed, and they were able to reduce. It's a great question. And again, the budget presentations are going to continue over the next couple of months as we start developing more in different various aspects of the budget. But for tonight's discussion, these are the first budgets that we have to take action on because they do impact our overall, and we're not seeing anything that says we should not be recommended the board approve.
Mr. Pepe, I have one question related to another agenda item that you presented on with respect to the audit. How long has this auditor served Southernly High? Do we have a policy on how frequently put this out to bid?
I do not know the answer to that. I do not believe we have a policy on how many years until it goes out to bid. As far as I know, the auditor's been the auditor for the district probably for the last decade.
Wow.
And some of the board members who have been on longer, you know, you can either tell me if I'm right or wrong.
And this is no, this is no criticism of the current auditor, but it is best practice on a periodic basis, whether it's every five years or seven years too. So perhaps we can put that on the agenda to talk about it in the future.
I think the only thing that's kind of helped is what he had spoken about is you've actually changed your business administration three times during that time period.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So you have, you have had to turn over that way.
Thank you. All right, with that, do I have a motion for Section 8, A through F?
Second.
Second is? Okay. Any other comments or questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Demming?
I just wanted one second to see what.
It's everything that Mr. Pepe went through. I'm taking them all together.
And the public library?
Yep. The attached bills list, the treasury reports, the tax refunds, the second quarterly payment to Southernly High Public Library, the audit report, the general operating budget for the intermediate unit, and the capital budget for the community college. Okay, that's for the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those motions carried.
If I could just add two, two quick things. First, I want to, in the bill list, it was noted that we had our medical consortium numbers, and I wanted to thank Mr. Pepe, who found his way onto the committee that renegotiated its, our, our rates with Highmark. And I think largely driven by his focus, although he would deny it. The renewal was exceptionally good with no increases and actually some strategic increases or benefits to the district. And the second point I wanted to make was that Mr. Pepe and I work very closely together, and he often sends piles of papers down the hall. And among the pile that he sent me was this article. And I read the article, "Making the MDNA a Daily Consideration." And as I go through it, I'm thinking, well, yes, this is a good article. I actually subscribe to this, and I'm curious what message he's trying to send to me in doing it. But as it happens, he was the author of the article. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that that was there too. And it was a very good one, and I, I, of course, learned from it. I've done this bit myself, wondering why he sent it to me, but sure enough, Louis Pepe was the, was the author of it. He'd be signing autographs. It was an unsigned copy of an article, but maybe we could.
Maybe it's the chapter, first chapter of his next book. Thank you, Mr. Pepe. Let's have either Dr. Mann or Mr. Pepe speak on the next agenda items.
You know what? Those are actually two quick, easy ones, so I'll take care of them.
Good, thank you.
The first one is simply the subdivision of land improvements agreement with the township. Township has been great to work with. This is typically set up for developers. However, we're currently still subject to it. So with the stadium project, we have to make sure that we get everything approved through the township, including the million dollars that we have to set aside that we will get back as the project comes to fruition and conclusion. I'm looking to seek a waiver in the future so that we do not have to do that because it just seems like, I said, it was originally, the intent was for developers. We're certainly not a developer. And our attorneys have been great in working with township's attorney to get all of these in place and before you tonight. So they've been reviewed by Kingsbury, and again, there's, you know, we're recommending they get approved. The second one is just part of the Stormwater Best Management Practices and Operation. Again, we're required with DEP to get that done for any project where you're moving dirt and potentially creating any runoff. And that's, again, contingent upon our project being successful. And Michael Rohrbach has actually worked very, you know, hard with, on this particular aspect. And AFOA, who's the contractor that's going to be doing it, is instrumental in ensuring that all the compliance issues are there for our permit for them to sign off by the end of the project. That's really all these are.
Thank you. Have a motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And those motions carried. Mr. Pigeon, talk about human resources.
Thank you. We have first readings tonight for 13 different policies. Of those 13 policies, 10 of them will be revisions and/or new policies. Three will be retired policies. So I don't know, Ms. Reinhardt, if you want to take all motions together, or you want to do them one at a time?
We can do them all together.
Okay. Any questions about the first reading of the policies, the 0-0-0 section, the board policies?
I had a question, I had some questions regarding, is it 0, well, it's triple 0, but I guess membership coded 004. And that's not so much a question, I guess maybe a comment. One is the, was the two, missing two, two meetings? And then you get launched possibly? Was that, was that previously in our, our policy? And I just didn't know it because I'm pretty sure I violated it somewhere along the line.
Yes, that was in the previous policy.
Okay, well, thank you to all of you for keeping me. I know. I know, I know a couple of you were probably plotting if I, if I had to guess. All right, well, we'll skip, I guess we'll skip that. I would say I'm, I would, I don't know if I'm in, I certainly think people should be attending their meetings, but two, two seems awfully quick on the trigger to me. But I do have a problem with in-service educational opportunities and required training programs. I assume that, that's all bolded, that is.
That's new.
Yeah.
Jeff, which policy are we talking about?
I'm talking about 004.
I don't see that under the documents.
It's, it's the first policy in the documents. It says Board Docs PL 004 PDF.
I'm looking at page.
I'm under first, this is under first reading of policies?
Correct.
That's where I'm looking at all.
It says 00001, 2, it skipped over 4. Oh, okay, the very bottom, thank you.
I was just looking on.
Gotcha.
Page three of six, they have almost all of page three and most of page four addresses training. You know, I think it's a good idea that members attend trainings if they think it's helpful to them. And I think new members generally is helpful. And, you know, I read their personnel, fiscal management operations. These are, I think, all good topics for people to be familiar with. But I think you got trauma-informed approaches, which I think can be a good thing from what I know about it. But I'm not a big fan of, you know, requiring education for people, for members of this community that are elected to the board, as if they need some type of, you know, reeducation or something. So while I think those are all good things, they can be encouraged, I don't think it should be mandatory training. I see there's in services that would be required, there'd be required training for new directors, and then there'd be required changes. Like I said, you know, trauma-informed approaches, what I know of that is generally a good thing. I don't know exactly what that means, though. I don't know who's going to be teaching it.
These are all part of the PSBA.
Yeah, that makes me even more worried.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, but I mean, this is all part of the PSBA, and it's, it's a relatively easy.
I don't think it's PSBA. Yeah.
They offer, they offer it, yes. Doesn't have to be.
And how is it that I've not gone to any of this stuff over 16 years? I am out of complaints. And.
No, that's, that is true.
That is true.
That is true.
Oh, okay.
If, if you're a board member, I think as of 2018 or 2019, coming into the board new, you're required to go through the PSBA or equivalent training.
I like that, so you're trying to tell you Harrisburg. So Harrisburg, do they have this for themselves? I don't think so, that's what I'm talking about, it's nonsense. I mean, come on, the state, the state reps aren't doing this, so.
I think you were grandfathered about the new training, but speaking of someone, I think once you're elected again, there is a modicum of training you're supposed to do that you're not grand. You're right, we as older board members are not required to do the full, you know, many hours that new board members are, but I still think there's like an hour or two you're supposed to every time you're reelected. Yeah, right, is that, am I recalling that correctly?
If it's any consolation, I think in the originals, PSBA designated themselves as the trainers of record, which we just pulled right out and even wait for you to suggest it. So.
That's the, the last one that's struck through.
Well, I mean, obviously, if it's, if it's according to state code.
Yeah, that's the only reason.
I would say I agree with you. I hope we will perhaps then allow people some, some options on how they want to fulfill these particular requirements and that we're not giving them one option or so, so.
There's facilities, the attorneys that have to sign up, that they're certified to provide the training. So you do have options.
All right, talk me into it. But I still don't like the two-meeting thing.
I think in general, just because PSBA recommends it doesn't mean that we need to act on it.
No, I agree, I mean, we don't have to make it a policy just because it's state code.
If it's a state code, that's one thing. But if it's a PSBA recommendation, I, I think we have too many policies as it is. We don't need to add things just because they recommend it.
100% agree, but my understanding is this is a state code, not PSBA. Is that correct? That's correct? Okay.
But one can obtain the training from other resources, including from our solicitor. Mr. Demming, what would you?
I've been at their training.
Yes, they're very good.
I would recommend that.
Mr. Demming, since you're uncomfortable with the two-meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's like.
What would you propose as an alternative?
Well, and is that school code?
Yeah, I'm going to use the mic, I'll hand my mic to him, but that's also school code, is what our solicitors say. And Jeff's voice is incredulous at that, but yeah.
And you're not grandfathered.
I do know about that. I am familiar with that. All right, well, who's the lawyer here, by the way? Well, I mean, I certainly would hope, that, that's fine then. I mean, it's been, I think generally the practice of the board that I'm aware of, you know, that generally has been called into question unless people, obviously, you're neglecting your duties and other things. Generally, when people, I think people have, I've missed two in a row. Usually for some kind of good reason, I suspect, but.
And that's allowed?
Yeah. Well, but I generally, we don't go in, I don't remember anybody requiring and asking me for a school note, you know, from, from wherever, so.
But I remember when we adopted that policy, and it was because we had a board member who was not a tenant.
No, that's, yeah, we have had that problem. I agree with you.
Okay. Mr. Pigeon?
That answers all my questions.
Thank you.
It's a good thing Attorney Moyer's here to keep us on the straight and narrow.
Other questions about 004? Other questions about 004?
No, let's go on to, we have a second reading for policies 808, 236, and 805.
Correct. Correct. Second, any questions on those three, or those three policies?
We should ask, where's Mann's note for tonight? See, this is what I'm talking, I'm joking.
He did, he did write to me.
Yeah, these, these were first, we had the first reading back in November for these.
Any questions or comments on those?
Were there any substantive changes since, I didn't think. Okay, thanks.
And we have a human resources report in your packet. Any questions, comments on that? Okay. It's motion to prove the. Items under human resources, so moved. Second. Nobody's going to, thank you, Mr. Lisette. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, those motions carry. So do we have any committee reports? I believe we covered the facilities committee.
There's nothing really to add from what Mike and Lou and others have already added. We will be having another meeting this, not tomorrow, but next week. So we're on, back on the first and third Tuesdays.
So this, this speaks to committee and new business. At the last meeting, Mr. Lisette asked folks to email me if they were interested in serving on a curriculum committee, and I did receive three responses. So tonight, I'd like to have some discussion on that committee. Any comments or questions? And we would place it on the agenda to vote to establish it at our next meeting.
I'll just comment, I think it's a good idea. I think part of the reason I had emailed you stating that I would, I would love to serve on a curriculum committee is not to micromanage the curriculum whatsoever, but just to serve as a liaison specifically to, to parents with this new curriculum, which, which, you know, from everything I read, it sounds like it's a great curriculum. You know, what, some of the concerns has been about age appropriateness, and that's the only reason why I would want to be on that, just to serve on that liaison and oversee and just ensure that we are being age appropriate, especially when you're talking about K through, K through five.
I, I feel that matters such as, I mean, I know it'll be brought up as a committee report kind of section at ARC, you know, whole group meetings or committee of the whole setups. But at the same time, I feel like the curriculum is something that is, drives a lot of interest with respect to both myself and I think other community members. And I think it's, it's very difficult for people in the community to keep track of multiple committee meetings that would be open to the public, I know. But I, I think it's, it's very easy because I noticed that people don't really know so much what's happening, I feel like, at this, this, with respect to facilities. I mean, I know you guys do a good job of updating us here, but I think if you miss a meeting and you didn't hear that, and it just, it's, it's a more condensed format. And I really think when it comes to, I think, facilities, it makes sense because there was so much nitty-gritty with, you know, contracts, and I, I think it makes sense for that arena to be handled by a, by a subcommittee. But I feel like education is something that generally involves, you know, a lot of our administrative staff, for example. You know, we often will have feedback presented, you know, just, I've been just thinking about the last meeting with respect to principals, assistant principals, the new curriculum, director of curriculum. So I just feel like that's something that maybe because there's so many hands in it and probably a lot of interest in it, K through 12, regardless of whether your child plays sports or plays an instrument or what have you. I would advocate that it remains more of a, a committee of the whole situation, but.
I don't think there's any attempt by having the committee to diminish Dr. Trinkle and her staff's reporting to the committee as a whole, the board as a whole, or to the public.
Right. No, I don't think you're trying to do that either. But I, so I guess, how would you approach it then? Would you continue to delve into the, because the level of detail would be lost at the regular meetings, because that's what happens, you know, when you have a, otherwise wouldn't be the point of having both, right? Like, I, I think you could have a, a standing educational committee, like you're, you know, you already have interests and members, but maybe they could be more of an ad hoc type of basis when things come up that maybe require a deeper dive.
That's, that's a good suggestion.
You know, you kind of say, okay, we're going to, let's take this, and then those relevant members of our administrative staff and, and community could attend those, you know, because we know.
Rather than regular scheduled meetings monthly, it's more focused on specific agendas.
Right.
Okay, good suggestion. Anyone else with comments and questions?
Me too.
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Serene points. I was another one of the individuals who emailed you saying I would be interested if a committee was formed. But I would say that in the interest of communicating and transparency with the community about upcoming changes, I do think the level of detail that is gone into at these meetings is very nice and important because folks know when they tune into a board meeting where the meeting is and where the recording is. And those committee meetings aren't, you know, recorded, so someone who is interested in a curricular item, they want to know more about their kid's education, this is a resource they can go to. Whereas, like, there isn't, there isn't a reference point for all those great in-depth facilities conversations because they aren't, you know, taped. They're open to the public, but. And then I would also just say my concern is also for, we are asking a lot of our administration and our staff in doing deep dives on a whole lot of topics, including curriculum. And from a committee perspective, adding one more meeting to their schedules for the sake of the board having a meeting, I just, I would want it to be efficient, and I would not want it to be a duplicate of what happens in general meetings. And therefore, I, I don't think it's as efficient a use of their time or as a transparent way of communicating with the community what the curriculum's going on inside our schools. So if there is a committee, I would be interested in serving upon it. But having said that, I, I think the way we have currently handled it is a committee of whole and public presentations with the, our teachers in classrooms and administrators helping guide that discussion is wonderful.
I'm going to ask some of the longer-term board members to talk a little bit about the history here of committee establishment dissolution over the last, I think, 12 years. So what's worked and what hasn't worked, because I know most districts do have committees that operate pretty effectively. I, on LCTI, I served on that board, and I'm on a policy committee, which is fairly efficient. So, Mr. Lisette, Mr. Demming?
Yeah, so when I came on to the board, and Jeff, you came on, what, two years prior to me? So I came on in December of 2011. At that time, we had, I think, at least six subcommittees of the board. We had a budget committee, an education committee, a policy committee. The others are escaping me, right? Yeah, facilities committee. I want to say there were at least two others that we had. I served on the education committee. I know Jeff had served on the budget committee. And I think you also served on the facilities committee at that time. I guess, as I think to my service on policy and on education at that time, when we had them, the, i- if you're not having any major changes to the curriculum, it probably doesn't really have a lot of utility. I think if you are having major changes to the curriculum, like what we've just done and will be doing, there's a perspective that you can gain and bring back to the full board that I think is different than just what we went through earlier this month with the presentation, that I think would be helpful. I think it's also kind of having that view that you can share from a board perspective to the administration and to the staff of things to consider that we did at the meeting, but it would have been nice to have done those three and four and five months ago as these considerations were underway, as opposed to at the last minute. So there's utility and purpose, but it has to be focused, in my opinion, for there to be value. I don't think that we should be overseeing the day-to-day operations, but when there are new things being considered, to craft them together could serve some utility.
Thank you.
I think the facilities committee, we've always had that, and I do think that's one that's always been appropriate. Because it seems like that one just requires guidance and direction in real time and, and feedback. So I, I've always thought the facilities was, was necessary. The rest of them, and also policy, wasn't always the worst thing to, it's not the, it's not the sexiest of positions, but it was, you know, I think, I think it helped to guide stuff. But, you know, the committees in the past had quite a bit of authority and power. And you, you could, things could happen at those, you know, that, to Dr. Serene's point, you know, depending on who was on that committee and what the agenda exactly was, and oftentimes, some pretty substantial decisions were made at that level. And, and I always took advantage of that when I was on the budget committee. Looking back on it, you know, I think those were, are probably better discussions for the whole board and the community. The reality is, you know, people aren't, I mean, people barely come to these meetings, you know, they're, you know, the reality that people are going to come to a four o'clock meeting somewhere in some building. Probably not the most transparent, not that anybody, I don't think anybody's ever trying to do anything silly, you know, not appropriate. But so I, I generally feel that, to the extent you can do things as a committee of the whole, I think. Because I, to your point, we've, at this point, I think I've seen, you know, a number of us have seen multiple iterations of this, approach, various approaches. And like I said, I think one or two facilities would be, one that comes to mind that I think is definitely appropriate. But to Dr. Serene's point, you know, the rest, I think, if you really thought you had an issue coming up, you're closing a school, which we did, and, you know, eliminating a subject, which we did, things like that. If you want to have a committee to deal with those things, I think they're appropriate as they happen. But to have a standing committee, in my opinion, the way I've seen it done, I think the way we're currently doing things is generally one of the most efficient practices that I, that I've seen during my time here.
And I served on committees as well in the past. I would just like, I agree with Mr. What Mr. Demming said there. The only thing I'd like to just add, and in addition to what he said and I agree with, is that ultimately, what committees have done, at least here, is that, yes, it does make, for nimble decision-making in, in, say, let's say, construction decision-making. But it also, by nature of that nimble approach and that small group discussion, places the power of the board and the decision-making on those topics in the hands of essentially two people. If you have a three-person committee, majority is two. And so I think what Mr. Demming was referencing, but, you know, I just want to reiterate, is that I think that's where there is efficiency, but at what cost? And when you have to be nimble, makes sense. But I would agree from the perspective of helping inform the community about the processes that take place and the discussions that take place and the thought that goes into it, I think this committee of the whole, by and large. That's why we have found historically as a board, that's why we've moved to this kind of body of authority.
Okay. Lots of good points here, and I'm not sure there's a perfect solution. So maybe we can find a balance and a compromise. We will put this on the agenda to vote on next, next meeting. But I do like the idea of an ad hoc education curriculum committee that would work on and focus on any major changes to education and curriculum with Dr. Trinkle and her staff. I would support that. Okay. Any other new business?
I, I do, I do have one item of new business. In, in our discussions, I think one of the things that we all have come to agree on is the importance of identifying and breaking barriers for our students in ways that are large and small. This could be, you know, two complex areas, like early literacy or post-secondary dual enrollment type of things. But along the way, we learned that, well, we have several female wrestlers who are participating on our wrestling teams. And the PIAA is giving very serious consideration to opening up a wrestle, a female wrestling program. They only have wrestling dual participation. And the thought is, and, and they, they want to have, before they move toward recognition, a minimum of 100 letters from school districts saying that they would support the PIAA's consideration of having both a boys and a girls wrestling program. Now, we are not anywhere near a position to create a new team. We don't have the enrollment there, but we do have a handful of girls who are participating. And, and my thought is that if we add our name to the list of districts, I think there's in the 90s now, who are advancing this, to say if the PIAA were to recognize girls wrestling as a, as a sport, that would expand playoff opportunities and competition opportunities for our current female wrestlers who do not have those open to them now. And so I proposed sending a letter to PIAA that would simply offer our support in their consideration of expanding opportunities for female wrestlers. And then the, the core message, I just pasted into the new business. And again, I thought, well, before I start sending letters, I should just throw that out to the board for your consideration. But again, it's intended just as an opportunity for our girls to have, and all girls who are participating in this wrestling, to have a broader opportunity to participate should PIAA decide to move in that direction.
Dr. Man, I want to thank you for writing that. I, you fully have my support to, to send that. I, I think it's wonderful. We do have a number, a handful of girls who are on the, both the youth, middle school, high school. I don't have any girls wrestling, but I have two sons who wrestle, friends who are girls. And as a perfect example, right, this Sunday, there was a girls-only wrestling tournament, and two of our girls came in first place, one came in third place. And, and so we have some very good girl wrestlers at Southern High. I think it's great.
If, if I may ask, Dr. Way, was that a PIAA event, or was it a private?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, see, that's the thing.
Private event. And there are actually a number of, of girl-only tournaments in this area.
Right.
So it's, um.
Yeah, and so if we could move, because I think the private groups are ahead of the public schools.
By far, by far.
And so there, I think there's a need for us to move in that direction.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for that.
And, and this is not an angle to get a team.
Yeah, no, no, and I'm not, I'm not saying we have the numbers necessarily, but, but we certainly have the interest. And I think if you have girl-only opportunities, then you'll even have more interest. So I think that's wonderful.
I was, I, as most young boys in Pennsylvania, it's, it's required to do some level of wrestling. I wrestled when I was a kid, and my, my, I have a number of sisters. My, my next oldest sister, by two years, Kim, she went on to be a Division One, she's a very good athlete, played field hockey. But when I was a kid, we didn't have enough money to have any kind of furniture in the dining room. So it was just a, it was a, my dad made it into like a wrestling mat. And I would go in there, and my, my sister would just kick the crud out of me for like, you know, 30 to 40 minutes. So I feel that she missed her, you know, if we had had this in the 19, in the 1980s, yeah. It would have been a good thing. Now, I, so I, I think it's, I've, I've, a number of people have interest in this. And I think it's a, I know Pen Ridge has a, a pretty good program down there that I'm aware of. And I think it's a great opportunity, be a great sport for girls, and I think it'd be something. So I'm, like, Dr. Way, a long way of saying I'm, I'm encouraged by, by your ability to, to bring this to attention. And it seems like PIAA should probably, you know, get on board. So we can, so Pennsylvania can continue to be, you know, we are, in my opinion, you know, the best state in the, in the country when it comes to, to wrestling. And so if we start on this early, we'll remain that way for the girls' side of things as well. I'm really on a tear tonight, so I'll, I'll be quiet now. Thank you.
Thank you for the story, and it must have been very late 80s, correct, Mr. Jett?
Thank you for that. Late, not like you, Dr. Mann. Substantially older.
So hearing, hearing no objections, hearing no objections, we'll, we'll draft this into a formal letter. Mrs. Lowbly's already has that teed up on the computer, I think, the, the letter, so we'll get that out perhaps tomorrow. And thank you for the, the support of that.
Okay. Any post-meeting visitor comments?
Actually, before we, well, while we're looking that up, the discussion of committees brought to mind. Is there, is there need to announce an executive session for the facilities committee that took place? I, I didn't hear. I attended the meeting. I know you all went into exec, but I didn't know if that, I just can't remember if it had been announced at the beginning of the meeting or not.
It was not, should have been, and that is entirely my fault for not passing. It was not, should have been, and that is entirely my fault for not passing along to Mrs. Moyer, which is not the first time I think I've overlooked, so.
We'll pay attention to that. Thank you, Mrs. Gaiman. Any visitor comments? Okay, with that, we're adjourned.
Very good. Oh, really? Not bad, not bad. Was that the over-under? Did you go 722?